We'll call the work session to order. Good morning. We have a good crowd out here today. We had three individuals to sign up to speak and I'm going to call those names out in the order that they registered. Maureen London for Maureen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It seems that, I heard this morning that folks are calling Phil's dog a shadow and we're in for another six weeks of school. It has been, brought to my attention that someone who refers to themselves as Douglas Citizen on Facebook, I don't know this individual, they took it upon themselves as a public service to post a survey of the citizens of Douglasville and Douglas County about where they wanted to see the animal shelter. First of all, they asked whether they wanted it in Deerly Park and then they asked where they would put it if not. And I understand that this person has been emailing you these results, but I don't know their names, so I don't know what email that would be. They posted the results as of this morning, the survey's only been up since Friday, but they posted the results as of this morning and the results now stand that 77% of the respondents do not want the animal shelter in Deerly Park, that 43% of them wanted it away from all parks, 35% recommended the old Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and 25% recommended the old Walmart building on Stewart Parkway. Since I spoke to you last, since I spoke to you guys last two weeks ago, Friends of Deerly Park has grown to over 1,370 members. This is a Facebook page whose stated mission is as follows: "We are friends and neighbors of Deerly Park. We do not believe the county's idea that having an animal shelter in the park is the best solution for the animals. We are certain it is not the best solution for the citizens. We are bonded together to find a more positive outcome for all." So I would like to suggest that the results of the survey and the number of individuals who are on the Friends of Deerly Park site would indicate that the number of people in Douglas County who do not want Deerly Park, or the animal control shelter in Deerly Park, are more than just a few so-called dissonants who don't want it in their backyard. And at this time, I would respectfully request that the board consider alternate sites outside of Deerly Park, perhaps starting with the three sites that the Animal Control Advisory Board was going to recommend to the board in December of 2013 before they were told they could use the park pills. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat Bowden. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for the increased budget for the animal shelter that we have right now. It has made the biggest difference. I can't even, you just can't even imagine. We're full staff, we have all full-time people there now. Bill has done a wonderful job. He has a great crew, Francis McMillan is here, she's the manager of the shelter, Stacy Worsham, Lori Elrod, all the new kennel techs, all the new road officers, everybody has stepped up. They're all excited about getting a new shelter and they realize that the conditions are not perfect, to say the least, at our current shelter, but anyway, they're really excited to get the new shelter and we are all full-time now, which means they have benefits, you know, thank you very much for that. I want to talk about the sites that the Animal Control Advisory Board chose or looked at, but first I want to, I'm not sure about the survey because someone told me about the survey. I went on there and voted for Deerly Park. I told my whole family, and there's like 57 of us here in Douglas County, and they went all in, voted for that. And when I voted Friday, it was 77 and 23. And when he voted yesterday morning, it was still 77 and 23.
And that's what I just said, it was 77 against and 23 for.
Yeah, I just wondered if that was just the first 100 people?
Well, there was an original problem with the original survey and it hasn't been re-launched.
I'm going to ask, ask you all to dress.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, Chairman. Anyway, I was just going to, I was just want to say, I think that was the first 100 people that were surveyed on that survey, so.
It was re-launched.
Okay, anyway, I'm sorry. Anyway, I don't think that's a fair survey because it was just the 100, the first 100 people that were surveyed. Let me tell you the reasoning, I'll keep my mouth straight now here, of what we thought about Deerly Park. All of us are in favor of the animal shelter being in Deerly Park. When I say "all of us," that means the Animal Control Advisory Board. There are two members here, Julie Hudson and Baldwin, and myself, and we all chose Site Number Two for a good reason, we think. Site Number One is on Deerly Road facing residents' homes and stuff, and we thought that was our first choice, but we didn't get that one, so it was just not feasible for the people who live there. Site Number Two, I think, is up at Dog Park. We have enough place to park. It would be so expensive to try to dig out the rock that's there or park there. The other part, place was the Skateboard Park. We'd have to take that down, rebuild it, a hundred and something thousand dollars. So we thought Site Number Two is the best. Now, I did speak with the architect this weekend and talked to him about Site Number Two, and he said he could put a 40-foot buffer all along Mack Road, a landscape buffer, and then a burn behind it on Site Number Two, so, and on the side of the animal shelter. He said it would not really be visible from the road, so that was Joe Watkins, Carter Watkins and such, so I just want to fill it all in, as to why we chose that site. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Judy, ready?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. I'm here in support of the animal shelter being at Deerly Park. I was a volunteer with the animal shelter in the Humane Society for 20 years and resigned about in the 80s due to old age and health reasons, so I've got a little bit familiarity with what it's like working there. And it seems to me that in order to best serve the animals that are in our care, as well as the employees, we need a shelter that will be out in front of the public, so it's not hidden away somewhere on a back street that nobody knows about, nobody can get to, and nobody can see. A shelter that would be easy to get to and that would be well managed and well kept is what we need. From the plans that I've just heard about, the building will be entirely closed, so there won't be any noise and any odor, and it's just a couple of blocks from the four-lane highway, and I think most of the traffic will be directed going and coming from there, what little there is. I think most of the traffic is going to be from people who are already in the park for whatever reason. Douglas County, we're still growing, we're becoming a part of the metropolitan, Atlantic metropolitan area, so we need a shelter we can be proud of, one that's going to, excuse me, one that's going to be taking care of the animals, providing for them, one that's going to be a place where the public will enjoy coming and one that the county can be proud of, the employees will have a safe and pleasant environment to work in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we appreciate the input from everyone. We have a presentation this morning, a Court Case Management Software recommendation that we're going to give from Russ Martin and Doug Emerson as well.
Good morning. And I'll actually just immediately turn it over to Doug Emerson. I'll, I'll make a call towards the end.
Did you send the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for letting me come talk to you. As you know, we've been working on this for several years. We've been running a case management system that serves very well. It's called the Sustained Justice Edition. It's actually a, y'all remember Windows 1998? That's when it came out. That's what we're still running. That was, how many years was it? My first iPhone came out in, what, 2007, something like that? So it predates the first iPhone by late 90's, the software we're running. And we're in a current version, but it's done very well, but it's timely replaces it. And the commission has already allocated funding for that. We out, we went over a number of prospective bidders. There were a wide range. Fortunately, one of the bidders, the Icon, was within our budget, but it also meets our needs. And we're very satisfied that it can be capable of handling what we want to do. Next slide, please. I do want to thank Bill and Russ for helping us with this. They've been extremely helpful getting us through this process. This is just an overview of what this thing does. This is all five courts, and I'll just tell you, a lot of places that I've talked to, they have, they have different courts, well, be running entirely different systems, costing the candid commissioners a fortune by running different systems. We're going to run this all five of your courts, probate, magistrate, juvenile, superiors of state, all five will run this one system on one set of servers. Next slide, please. The process, we met with people from Solicitor General, DA, public defender, as well as all of the courts. We had a lot of meetings over the last year and a half. The reason we involved the DA and Solicitor General and Public Defender in this, for example, the Public Defender, this software is vital to them. They use and access our court software, that's how they keep up with their cases, and that's when people call up, when am I doing court? That's what they're looking at, is the court's case management system where all that is displayed. We plan for what's called data sharing, and that is an integration process, and that is, and this DA and the Solicitor General run software called Tracker, which is provided by the state attorneys, the District Attorneys Association. This product is very good at integrating with Tracker. They've done it in holding and other circuits, so that's another reason why we look very favorably at this product. And we also had four different vendors come and give us demonstration, so that we learned a lot about what the marketplace is and the capabilities are. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the integration, and this is where we save county governments money. If we can integrate data sharing, that eliminates having to rekey huge amounts of information as cases like, for example, State Court, we'll have about 15,000 traffic cases a year coming to State Court. If we don't, if the State Court doesn't have to rekey all of that information, the identifiers like that, it saves the commissioners money. Okay, so web-based product, it'll be faster, more efficient, it's internet accessible. And we have Marty Haun, who's the president of Icon here today, to address you all as well on specific, on security, and to ask me some questions about how do we secure this? And we do need to be very careful about how we secure very important information because you all literally have millions invested in the information that we've already got, and we've got to protect that because of all the data entrance that's coming into building this system. This will also be part of the conversion, and Icon has converted other sustained systems before. Next slide. Well, that last line, I'm going to remind y'all, y'all remember the 8 dot 3 file names? You need to have three char, eight characters, period and three. Sustained can't address a long file name, that's one of the reasons we're changing. I don't know if y'all remember that. Okay, that's the process, I've already explained that to you. Next slide. These are the vendors. Tyler Technologies is a very good company, their product is a whole lot more expensive than this, a lot more, and hundreds of thousands of dollars more, okay? Icon, we're satisfied, they're George Covling, and at this time, I'm going to ask Marty Haun, who is the president of Icon, to answer any of your questions if you have any.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know if you have any questions. I will touch upon.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I will touch upon the security that the judge mentioned. The products that we put out are all web-based and all the ones that we run on our servers that we host are all PCI, credit card industry compliant, they meet HIPAA standards, we can encrypt any field individually, whether it be a database, a security number, and it also runs with Windows authentication, which gives the IT department full control over who accesses the database as a view or a read or a write, read-write administrator and such. So it's, it's been, it's tested, our stuff is tested on a daily basis by McAfee and also by the Credit Card Industry Quarterly. Now, when we put it on your servers, of course, we can use SSL encryption as well, and so everything's passing through the system as a 2048 encryption, so I'm pretty confident that it'll meet all the security needs of your courts in protecting data that needs to be protected.
Commissioner Roth, if you have a question.
Yeah, a couple of questions. And I'm going, Judge, I'm going to pose this to you. Just in general, from an accessibility perspective, I mean, I guess, when I think about case management, I think of two parts. There is the internal use, all the five courts, but then there's external access. And, you know, one of the things I look at when people are trying to interact with government is how easy it is for them to be able to get in, to find what's going on within the county. How, does it, does it meet the needs or the objective of being able to, you know, where do I stand, calendaring, I mean, just the basic stuff that you can provide in public need? I hear that this is a tool for internal use, but is it being leveraged for lawyers? Is it being leveraged for people who are outside of the government?
First of all, as lawyers, we plan to allow lawyers to have access to it. We already have, the old system that we have now, we actually have a website set up where they can log in and they can see all their scheduled events, they can see their filings, but we've never had the security to be able to put all of the documents. You all have paid the employees in the clerk's office to scan hundreds of thousands of documents a year into this, this is the current system. We've never had the security to let that be out there. So we already allow third-party outsiders to see the scheduled events and the documented things in the system. This system, that's a big functionality that we want to allow in this system. Now, exactly how we'll implement that remains to be seen, because first of all, we do want to allow the attorneys to have access and subject to security and communications capabilities, the public. Also, we have to make decisions about exactly which documents we're going to put out there because there are documents, for example, settlement agreements in divorces that involve children, okay? We've got to be able to secure that so that these children aren't just invaded. For example, one of the most recent changes the legislature made, we've historically gotten names and birthdates of children in affidavits in all kinds of cases. Well, you just don't want those kind of identifiers out there anymore. So we've got to work to secure that, but it is going to be, the, a big part of our goal is to have a formal, accessible system, so that's the answer.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I think you are, I think it's really, there's still some policy decisions as far as implementing.
Yes, we have to be careful because we can't just put everything out there. We have, we have important identifiers, for example, you know, we have, every court will defend its, their social security numbers in our system, so we have to protect that. We can't let that be out there.
Okay. Final question, Mr. Chairman. And I'm open to who to answer this from. Is this a recommendation to us now? Are we at a point of recommendation or are we just hearing a presentation? What do we?
We're ready to make, we're ready to make decisions.
Right, so from that perspective, I guess I'll speak to the, what the vendor is here, so that's fine. Are we confident they're going to be here in a couple of years and being able to commit and support to this? Because we're putting a lot of money into this, and I guess, for our sake and for the public's sake, what type of assurance, what type of references do they currently have that says that this is, I don't know anything about it, this is my very first time hearing about this vendor, are they going to be here two, three years from now?
Well, we looked at all of that, have excellent references, and I'm going, right, Mr. Haun, pick your, your company to this.
All right, please.
I started working with the courts in 1984 as a sole proprietor, and through the company, we now, we now have 85 superior courts in over 90 counties in the state of Georgia using our software. So we are, we are the largest vendor in the state of Georgia. I'm pretty confident we'll be here for quite a while, we're still pretty young. So it's, we have quality software installed in all-size counties, from the smallest up into the metro-sized counties currently being used.
Okay, so just to clarify my final point, Chairman, you have that. So from a support perspective, do you have a dedicated representative to us? How will you support us going forward? Just curious.
Your account manager, sitting right behind you there, Pete Zambri. We have a dedicated staff that's just for Georgia for support and programming. That's, this is, this is our core business. We do have installs in seven states, six states, I'm sorry. And so we do, we do have a pretty good footprint, but Georgia is our core business, and this is where we spend the majority of our time and efforts.
In addition to public safety, the judicial part of our, of our government is very important. It's lifeblood, it's got to work, it's got to, it's got to function, so I appreciate you asking us, allowing us to ask these questions.
Mr. Gatter was next, and she serves on our technology committee as well as Commissioner Mitchell, and I think they have reviewed this as well. Did I get your response from y'all?
Yes, we vetted it in our technology committee, but just for the public, could you kind of explain how long it will take for the conversion of the data? Plus, the warranty and maintenance fees from here on out?
Okay. The conversions, depending on the amount of data, we've already converted sustained data, so we do have applications already written for conversion purposes. They can vary from 30 days to six months, depending on the volume and the timeframes of the court and the personnel availability. My experience in one of this size would be 60 to 120 days to convert the data and have a conversion that everyone's happy with.
Will you be running parallel systems during that time?
We, that's not going to be a parallel, like, cut over the conversion and the processes of presenting the data, and different iterations would be first before we would get to any point where they would actually be running the application. We would never want to convert the data and assume that it's going to be good. One thing we found with the sustained data is everywhere we've been, there's been a field or two that's used differently by every court.
Because of the user.
Because of the age of the system and the interaction of the data. So what we think, what was converted correctly in one place, the next thing, it's, it's a completely different field, but most of the core fields are the same. So that's why we like to do a couple iterations of the data presented in our application so that it can be looked at side by side. There's also images to consider, the number of images and how long that run will take. We've converted quite a few images as long, as well as data, and as I said, most of them have been a three or four-month process to make sure everything is exactly the way we want it. The courts really have to decide if they want to do parallel or whether they want to look at the software and then decide, or cut over date.
And what about the warranty and the maintenance fee? I know it will change.
Right, the first year, of course, is included with the software purchase. That's always the way we present the software. The maintenance from that point on, after that, we have generally guaranteed a maintenance price for, you know, in the system contract-wise with a service-level agreement for anywhere from two to four years, depending on how courts like to do their contracts. Some don't like to do any more than 12 months at a time, renew every 12 months. So that's really, depends on the local rules as well. We've had some that want to guarantee the price for four years, and then we have some that want to guarantee the price only for a year because that's all they're allowed, and then they renew every 12 months, so.
And as legislation changes, you immediately update.
Yes, we're very confident in that. We usually meet every deadline. We've had some legislation changes beginning of this year for electronic processes that needed to be placed for January 1. We had all of our courts updated over the holidays for.
But that's included in regular.
That is included in regular maintenance, all legislative changes, yes.
All right, and down the line, if, when we start allowing attorneys to download their documents and things out there, is there a way of charging user fees?
Yes.
That was part of the bid package.
Yes.
More specifications we included. And also, Mr. Peacock, you speak to, the maintenance fees for this project were much lower than the others.
Okay.
That's true. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me, but the judge is exactly right, the maintenance fees were more reasonable with Icon than any of the other, any of the other companies.
One part is, out of general experience, it's about 100, something here.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Roth, if you have a question. Just finish. Go ahead, okay. Mr. Mitchell.
And I just want to add, and I don't even want to jump in there, which did actually have been vetted and went through the technology committee, I think it was a great idea, but just one, with training the staff and kind of getting the staff and the judges and everybody on board, because I know some of our judges are very young, technology, so how do we kind of convert these guys over and what that process looks like, what kind of timing on that type of process?
Training is, as we mentioned, we mentioned, our, training is, training is an interesting, is an interesting animal. We definitely have several models. We do a train-to-trainer, of course, where we have the administrative staff and the people in charge of each department get a little bit more in-depth. We have an administrative-type IT training that we'll go through for setting up new users and setting up user groups and setting roles for each person as to what they have access to and do not have access to. And we will have, we can even do classroom training for the judges where we go through a lot of the highlights that we have for them, because we have a dashboard-driven system for the judges where they have all their information on one screen for going into different pending lists and calendars and cases they're working on regularly bookmarked and all the different, different things that we do. So we have like a class where we'll do a dashboard training for the judge and their staff as well.
And it talks us about, I think these guys, but I know, but they don't know that how you created and added some specialty programming in which we need, from our perspective, and that we kind of redesign or design the software to fit our needs.
The custom modifications, yes.
Yes.
A lot of our, well, the dashboard is, you know, configurable, so if there's certain things that you, that one person doesn't need, another person doesn't need, they do not have to see those based upon the needs of that user. Most of our software is designed with the uniform rules of Georgia in mind, so there's, I'm pretty confident there's going to be very little customization where it regard to what's on the screens and the elements that are available. Now, that being said, every court has different ideas of a few things here and a few things there. And one of the things that I think we can talk to any of our customers about is they, we encourage feedback from our customers because what we can make better in our product by getting information from another court and presenting it and making it available to other courts, we like to maintain one version of our software. We don't like to have a, just a custom version somewhere, so things we put in in Douglas would be options that would be available to every other court as, if they're, if they're things that are not so custom that no one else could use them. But for the, I would say 95 to 98% of everything is customized, another court finds useful, so.
And in this converting factor, if there are percentages, so that may be lost in the whole conver, I mean, we lost the degree of, we can't get it, but just trying to transfer our files over to this new program.
We haven't really, we haven't really found that there's been a data loss issue. What we've found is when there's something that's in a field that we didn't expect, we go back and have to do a requery and then bring that in as it's found over the period of the conversion, which is the second and the third and the fourth iteration, maybe depending on volume and how different it is.
So I just wanted to know, we're not going to lose anything, it's just that maybe.
Well, we still have the sustained data. We just stopped putting new data into it, but we're going to, we still have the sustained system out there.
Understood.
And, you know, we're not about to go delete that until, you know, we might keep that forever, but we want to move everything over to this new system, but we'd still have that city there.
And finally, just talk to the, that this is already, I haven't talked to that number four.
All right. 400,000 of the software. Y'all already budgeted that, 150 last year, I think 250 this year. Where we are right now, though, is we've got to have new hardware, and Russ has developed the platform for that, so that's the answer to, and, you know, I'll be, I'll just tell you, but I think it's very reasonable. Of course, Russ, everything, he told me everything he ever says is reasonable. But, you know, but this is what we, where we are now, is this is the new hardware to run the new system. You don't want to try to install something in an old system. Russ?
No, so yeah, that was all we want to hit here, was the total solution cost when you add the hardware environment that we do need to add, because we do not have sufficient hardware, just circle us, data center to be in the house, this environment. So the environment itself, and it's, I've got HA hardware environment up there, it's called High Availability, so what we want to be able to do is have an environment, if we get to move one more slide, I don't want to run along so many files fast. So this is the environment that we proposed building. It's two Dell servers, one will be here, one will be in a backup facility which we'll use at the EOC for now, the 911 center. Everything will be duplicate, right? So what, anything we have here in our production environment, we'll also have in our backup environment. We use the software, we're working on it right now called Beam to do replication. What it gives us is an RTO, which is a recovery time objective of one hour, which means if we lose the system on, we get our courts back up and running within an hour, fully functional. And with a recovery point objective of four hours, which real-time replication is, you know, it's a bell curve of expense that you just really can't get into. To say we want to have real-time replication would be incredibly expensive. With a recovery point objective of four hours, which real time replication is, you know, it's a bell curve of expense that you just really can't get into. To say we want to have real time replication would be incredibly expensive, but to do four hours, which means if the system on the left failed and we had to come up on the right, worst case scenario is they would lose four hours worth of data entry. But that can be done at a price that we talked about fifty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
And I understand that this, this is a system that you have to have communication capacity, but this is, like I say, the whole point of this is to open it up and sort of, I think, I think they commonly call it bandwidth. This is an entirely new approach to, we've had a system that was hauled pretty much, you know, sequestered where you could pull stuff out of it, but this is a system, it's a totally different approach because you're looking at it on your end. One more slide, what was it?
Marty's here, he got perfect, Pete is our account manager, then who can I ask questions?
As I, as I read my agenda list here, it says this is not yet intended to be an official agenda out, why not?
So that was, as we, yeah, as we discussed with the technology committee, what we wanted to do was present it to the board today. It is the two weeks until our next work session and we'll place it on the work session agenda in two weeks. Also, I forgot, there's a board of commission share that you guys have, POC, GDRAP. If not, I'll send everybody a link. We'll put all the documentation, the icon, RFP will be in there, it's already there actually. We'll put a copy of this presentation there, so, and you can actually put a copy of the the RFP if you'd like to see it as well. But all the documentation will be there so it can be studied between now and the next work session. You can ask any follow up question.
I certainly support the evaluation committee and the technology committee. Can't leave something to them, you know, but-
But I mean, I don't think the hardware was brought up at the technology.
Right, we had an environment that-
And we wanted you guys to see it as well. We felt confident and we wanted the entire board to kind of get their buy-in and their tie-in, that's why we asked that the judge and everybody else kind of come into a presentation to kind of make sure that we all were seeing the same things and have any other questions that we may have, so, you know, just want to appreciate.
And thank you, that was a very good presentation.
Yes.
All right, thank y'all. And if y'all have any questions, let's know.
Thank you.
Kind of give a good problem.
All right. Thank y'all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we will have a presentation tomorrow. Recognizing one of our own for accomplishments in the Georgia Transit Association Outstanding Transit Manager Award. Mr. Olson, can you talk about that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we wanted to have the board publicly recognize Gary Watson, Transportation Services Manager for this award at EOC. It's a very prestigious award, it's an outstanding award. It certainly speaks to the efforts that Gary puts forth every day toward our programs and the success of those programs. And I think it's certainly a reflection on, a positive reflection on Douglas County and what we're doing with our Transportation Services Program. So just wanted the board to be able to publicly recognize Gary for receiving this award.
We will be proud to do that. Congratulations, Gary. All right, you have the minutes of the commission meeting of January twentieth, two thousand fourteen, the work session minutes of January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, the executive session summary of January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Please review those before tomorrow, see if there's any corrections, additions or deletions that need to be made. Under county administrator business authorization to approve a college reimbursement program for county employees. Mark, would you talk a little bit about that? This is something that we talked about, we talked with the shared department, and we thought we should include others in this whole process, but would you talk a little bit about that, Mark?
Yes, sir. First, it was first brought up by Stan, Chief Copeland, a couple weeks ago. But essentially what, what we have proposed, or what I have proposed is employees will have to have a minimum two years employment with the county, and I'm not going to read everything on here, but they must be enrolled in a reasonably accredited college or university. And in order for them to obtain reimbursement, they would have to have a three-point O GPA for, to get reimbursement for those credit hours. And then if they leave the county for any reason, then they would have to repay back anything over the period of twelve months. As far as the amount of reimbursement, Cobb County has, they pay up to three thousand dollars per year. Winnetka County pays two hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents per credit hour, which is based on the university system of Georgia per credit hour chart. Right now, in this document, we have three thousand dollars per calendar year reimbursement. Discussions with Chief Copeland, I thought. He would rather have the two hundred and seventy dollars per credit hour. Not everybody would take a full load and work full time, because these would have to be full time employees is what we're proposing. But if they did work full time and go to school full time for an entire year at two hundred and seventy dollars per credit hour, you're looking at about nine to ten thousand dollars would be the difference. How many get racks, you know, go to school full time? I would guess not many, but we do not have that number.
A little background on this tuition program has just come about when we were discussing salary increases for public safety employees, Sheriff Department and Fire EMS. And many of our surrounding counties do offer this tuition program, including the City of Douglasville as well. So Chief Copeland had come up with the program and we actually were going to initiate it at the time we initiated the pay increases, but we were not ready, we wanted to include some other individuals, so Chief, Chief Copeland here.
Yes, sir.
Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, we, we always believe that this is a win-win for the county. It is an expensive process, but guess what? College is an expensive process. If y'all will allow me to turn in all my bills from ten or fifteen years ago, I'd love to get reimbursement myself, but this is a huge win for both the county and the employee. If they go with this, we, I think you go over a barrel, but we have them committed to work for Douglasville for an extended period of time where they have to pay this money back. You're going to get a much more well-rounded employee regardless of what, you know, if they're taking classes in business or in communications or, and in our department, of course, we would restrict it to public safety or criminology or criminal justice or something like that. So we see all the time, particularly in the age, everybody's sitting here talking about software changing, the law changes continuously. A more educated law enforcement officer is a better law enforcement officer just simply because they have the capabilities. And it changes much easier for them, they pick up on things much easier, so, you know, I can see it throughout the department, those with degrees or those who have pursued those. Plus, in our policy, in order for you to make rank, now, college degrees are weighed heavily in that decision-making process. So as, as in most departments around us that we compete with, many departments now who are accredited throughout the southeast, without a degree, you can't make it above whatever entry level position you're in. Sergeant and above requires an associate or maybe a bachelor's or, and many of them, as you get into a higher ranking, even a master's degree. So this is, it's just something, we believe the money would be well spent legal to draw up the, as far as the reimbursement requirements. And at least in my department, very few are going to take a full load. They just can't, they just can't do that and work full time, or at least if they try to figure that out.
I go back, I go back a long time, back to the old quarter hours et cetera, instead of semesters like we have now. What is a full load right now?
Well, some colleges change that around, but it's according to how your classes are dispersed. A full load can either be two evening classes that are four or five hours a night, or online it's different, so they measure it differently. It's anywhere between six and nine hours per breakup in the semester, so it's a, and when you add two classes, two semester classes, you're going to class, if you go to class and not online or even online, you go four and a half hours twice a week. Then you add the papers you have to do, the tests you have to study for and all that year and night. It won't take them at one time to take more than that, and the next time they won't.
Mark, help me out a little bit here. You check with Cobb County, Winnetka County, what was the max? We're not, we can't pay for everybody's education, we understand that, but this is an incentive to allow people to, to go back to college and get that education and, and stay employed with Douglas County Government. But did, what did you find with Cobb and Winnetka, what was, what were they, what was the amount of dollars they were presented in there?
Winnetka County was two hundred and seventy dollars per credit hour. And at twelve hours, if you go three semesters, that's eight, nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. I think we talked about a three thousand dollar max per year. Would that work, Chief, with the-
Well, Chairman, a three thousand dollar a year in, even in state college now is not, that's about, that's about a thirty percent reimbursement rate. I agree with you, and, and when we initially sent this in, I think all employees need a buy-in. I don't think the county owes them an education. That's for them to buy in. But I believe at least a fifty percent reimbursement would be, which, as Mark, even at full time, even if the county would do six thousand per year at a cap. Some are not going to take that per year, that would be a cap amount. Plus, some of them who will first go to some of your technical colleges to get their initial associate degree, it will be at a much lower cost, so they can kind of weigh that out. Hey, do I want to go here? Because your online colleges now, which a lot of people are going to, online credit hours are very expensive now just because of the nature of the online companies or online degrees.
Can we, can I just review the additional comments?
Yeah, it's, it's one of those where, you know, back in the day, I'll say, you know, when I went through, you know, I was working in a call center, the second person that was hired there, you know, making eighteen thousand a year, worked full time during the day and worked full time at night. I got tuition reimbursement for both my undergraduate and graduate degree. It was a ninety percent reimbursement, so you had to put money upfront and then, you know, you had to pay for your own books. That's way back when, and of course, I worked for an insurance company, that's a totally different thing than the government. But I say that and say that, I, I think you give all of our employees the option, Mr. Chairman, and that's really what this is about, is just the option, that you've got to make a commitment to this, you've got to pay this upfront, and you've got to maintain your grades. That's a different animal. This is just not responding to your education, this is, you've got to maintain that, and I think we've got to, some kind of way with HR, make sure we've got the right policies in place to ensure that we enforce this. But I think it's commendable, I think it's, it's, it's one of those where, okay, we're thinking about your benefit long-term, but it is tough to go full time and work full time, especially in your area, probably was a little bit different than probably, you know, the traditional area. I, I think it's, it's something that I, I'm happy that we're considering. I'll just leave it at that, this is a good thing.
I fully support the idea of some, some form of tuition reimbursement. You know, in past life, I was involved in succession planning in my professional career, and that's, that's really kind of the lifeblood of nurturing and bringing, bringing your employees along to stay with, with the county, with the entity, the company, whatever it is. More common term is just having, having a bench string where somebody could step in, somebody leaves employment or, or there's an accident or whatever, you've got people that are lined up that can fulfill fully the responsibilities of that position. It's, it's not just an issue of intelligence, but a lot of times it's about focus and diligence and discipline and concentration and organization, you know, to get a degree, which I have none of, I didn't get a degree. But I think it's important that we do this. I'm a little, I'm a little soft on what, you know, what the, what the money amount should be. On one side, I would have a problem starting with the three thousand dollars and see what kind of, what the participation is, but then I would be open to a larger amount as well. But I'm curious to just see what kind of, what kind of participation would be and what the bottom line dollar now is going to be on, on an annualized basis if, if we implement this, so.
I agree, Commissioner, and I'm not, I don't think we're ready to adopt this right now. We would have to have our department heads, the sheriff, the fire chief, come back to us. This will have to be budgeted in their budget. We don't have a budget right now. But it's something I want to pursue, you know, I went to school at night. I never, well, I didn't take a full load most of the night. Back in the old days, ten credit hours, ten quarter hours was, was not full time. You had to go Monday, Wednesday and Friday to get those, and I liked my Friday nights off, so I didn't, I didn't take too much of those. But I worked during the day and went to school at night for about seven years, so I can understand. I would love to have had my employer at that time pay, pay for some of my schooling, but it wasn't nearly as expensive then as it is today and was next.
Yes, and I, I do support some reimbursement of tuition and everything, but I have, is this to be related to your existing job? Because the way this is worded, it says related to a profession to Douglas County. I mean, a tag clerk could say they want to be a judge or something. Should it not be related to the job you're in?
Yes, ma'am. Hours was, of course, Mark had to change it for the county. What I sent originally during the budget process would have been the general order and policy of the sheriff. So he would have, have to tweak it. Hours is, yes, your, your degree must be in the field approved and related to the department. And like I said, criminal justice, criminal, there's a lot of them, I mean, there's, but you know, they can't go take basket weaving one all night and get credit.
That's what I'm talking about, because it just says a profession, so it should be more specific to the job. And I had to go to night school when we moved to this new courthouse. We didn't, I didn't, didn't grow up with PCs, so I went to the tech school over here for two years at night. I took four hours at night for two years, so it can-
It requires a commitment, which is what, like I said, we don't, it should, it should. College is not something, you should be handed somebody needs to-
It has to add up.
No, in college, it's not for everyone. We still need to do some homework here, but we want to, we want to talk, get the conversation out, start talking about it. It's something I think we should do, we've got to find out what we can afford as a county. So I'm going to ask Mark to continue to work on this and, and see what some other counties are doing and, and check the, check the successes and the favors of, of other governments as well. Yes, sir.
I'm not imposing this idea on the commission, but I'd like some feedback. Is it plausible to do a survey of employees, which you, would, of their desire to go to school without any kind of reimbursement and what, what the implications would be of reimbursement were provided and, and possibly director, what, what the need would be, you know, financially, but to sur, survey employees. I understand the vast majority of people, if you have the bridge, they're not interested, you know, in bidding. But maybe it might give us an idea of how to budget and how to structure at least the first year.
We want to do some more homework.
Definitely needs to-
They might get statistics from the other counties as to what percentage of their employees actually take advantage of this.
I guess another question would be, are we talking about core classes and are we talking about if they get any grants or any other loans and all this other stuff? You know, would that be a part of or not a part of? Maybe based on grades? I mean, an A, I know where I did, as Kelly stated earlier, if you got an A, you got a hundred percent, if you got a B, you got another percent, and so on. You know, that may be something to look at, but I'd love to kind of massage it some more to make sure that we're all on the same page of what it is or what it would look like or what it could be. But I would like to also state that it, it needs to be, and not to say anything negative about the sheriff's department, but I mean, it needs to be for the entire staff, for all employees, and we need to massage it that way more so.
Well, that's, that's the reason our county administrator brought that, when we started talking about Fire EMS and Sheriff's Department, and Mark said, why can't we do this for all train employees? So that's what we want to take a look at, let's find out where we need to go from here, but I want to throw it out- But I wanted to throw it out there, get your input and I think we've had some good input. Okay, thank you. Okay, under business, number five, authorization to accept funds from the sheriff's office asset forfeiture account in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the purchase of computer software and support for investigation, Chief.
Yes sir, this is just some new forensic software that we're purchasing for our investigation division. It basically involves, when it involves multiple defendants, it's kind of some software that helps you put it together for the DA, what role that each defendant played in a particular case. You can have big fraud cases where you have, well, we just had a heroin case, we had thirty-two defendants in that case. So it brings those together in a manageable format. And I don't know if we have to change the agenda, Mr. Chairman, but I would like, there's also a, we sent up another check and, you know, it slows the process, but there's a check for fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. Also, if the board could approve the acceptance of that, we have our live firehouse out at the firing range. These are portable bullet traps that are badly needed out there when you fire with live ammunition. And we're able to, they're a new type system. And the instructors can go in and move those around inside the live firehouse so you don't know, as you're going around checking, which target is good guy, bad guy, where they're at. They're not at the same location every time, which kind of, it makes the deputies go in and think when they're going in.
I don't see any problem with adding that to the agenda, make sure we got the county.
No objections.
All right, under tab six, thank you Chief. Authorization to set checks from the district attorney's asset pre-forfeiture account in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Deposit seven forty-seven third into the DA's asset post-forfeiture account. Deposit six thousand seven hundred and twenty-five seventy into the general fund and remit these funds to the sheriff's offices. I think everybody understands the process. Under tab seven, appointment of Philip Montgomery to be the county representative to the cultural arts council. Mr. Tapp.
Yes sir, with the retirement of Ray Martin last week, we have a vacant seat of the county's representative on the cultural arts council. Dr. Philip Montgomery is a retired educator and a nationally recognized expert in programming and curriculum and he has volunteered to be the county's representative on the CAC. This should be the easiest item on your agenda today. If someone is volunteering to be on the board and representing and we recommend his appointment.
We appreciate your insight. Under tab eight, authorization to extend the agreement for the NSP program administrative services with the Atlanta Neighborhood Development Partnership for a period of one year. Authorize the chairman to sign all related documents to final legal review, Tracy.
And this is just our annual renewal with ANDP for administering NSP for us. They've been working with us since we originally got our first grant in June of two thousand nine. And they continue to work well with us, they actually just closed on two additional houses on Friday, which we only have five in our stock, getting ready to be repurposed. And one of those is already under contract, so we're just proposing to continue their services with us as we start to find this right for red debt.
Okay, Tracy, will you have some figures for us tomorrow regarding how many homes?
I actually have them today if we might talk about it.
You write them up, you write them up, Commissioner.
Yeah, I did, that was part of my question, so I just have one more then. Which is, okay, we've been working with them for six years and just like our, any other professional service providers, or in this case, this is a contract, right? Should we consider others or do we think that this NSP program ended up itself from a federal perspective, it's winding down, which is, it's easier for us to just go ahead and ride out with them? Because just, I start hearing five years plus with any one person, it makes me pause, it's sort of like, that's a long time.
Right, we are sort of at the jumping off point with winding down this grant. My estimate within twelve eighteen months, we'll be spent out on it, so we're going to tail that grant.
Basically, is this program going to end or is it going to continue, do you know?
As long as we have program income on hand, we can keep going, add an item, because once we sell a house, we can keep moving forward. The goal is to spend the original amount of the grant and then just be working from what's left over from our program income. So it'll probably go well into the future, past eighteen months, but we'll just be at a much slower pace than we have been.
Question time. Under tab nine, authorization to allow the Metro Atlanta Firefighters Conference to utilize the Douglas County Fire and EMS Department Training Complex for the annual conference schedule for May fourteen through seventeen. And authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents up to legal review, Chief Spencer.
Yes sir, we did this last year. This conference is actually becoming one of the premier conferences in the southeast. And by allowing them to use our complex, that gets some of our folks in the programs. There's nationwide instructors that come in and do this, so it's a real good deal for both us and Metro Atlanta.
What actually do you do?
Well, they teach our guys about strategy and tactics for firefighting. They use our training center to ladder our tower, show them engine and ladder company operations.
Can we come over and film it?
Oh absolutely, absolutely we can, absolutely we can.
Yes sir. So are there any certifications given out at this time, or during this conference?
Just a certificate of completion.
And how many people normally come in?
Last year, I think they had about three hundred folks. It's a big deal.
You put up a ten?
Oh gee.
So. We do, we do. And it's done at several different locations around the metro Atlanta area, so we're just one of several.
Thank you Chief. Under tab ten, authorization to approve a mutual automatic aid agreement with Pauling County.
Yes sir, this is an annual thing that we do with the surrounding counties that allows us to run into their county to help them when they have large incidents and allow them to run into our county when we have large incidents and help us out.
We have a great election.
We sure do, a lot of good folks.
Just a quick question, are there any, normally any fees that are associated with that? If they happen to cross jurisdiction like that line like that?
No sir.
Just help when in need, when is there?
Each department is responsible for their own, if one of our trucks breaks while we're helping in Pauling County, we've got to fix it. If one of their trucks breaks while they're helping Douglas County, they got to fix it.
But they just come over and provide assistance or any, you know, additional need and once it's over, it's over?
Yes sir.
I just thought maybe they made a cost associated with that down the road or something like that?
No sir, and I'll be bringing several more of these forward over the next couple of months to get all of our mutual aid agreements up to date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under tab eleven, approval of contract award to Gresham, Smith and Parker to conduct a transportation services study for Douglas County for a total price of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review, Mr. Pecan.
Yes sir, this is the transportation study that we did out last year. We have been doing our due diligence and doing the evaluation and checking out each of the proposals. We did receive seven proposals, those are listed in your agenda item. The one thing that we did not list was the actual rating from the evaluation committee and we will provide that in hard copy later today. But just so you'll know, Gresham, Smith and Parker's was the number one rated proposal. Jacobs Engineering was number two, HNTB was number three, Kimberly-Horn was number four, URS was five, Nelson-Niagara was six and the impact group was seven. We'll provide the actual documentation to support that later today. We, again, the evaluation committee consisted of the Douglas County Department of Transportation, senior services and myself, and we are recommending this, the award of this contract to Gresham, Smith and Parker's for the total price of one seventy-nine six one eight.
Randy?
Yes sir.
Tell us a little bit about what we're doing here.
Well, this is our transportation services study. It is funded partially with federal transit administration funds. It's part of the program of projects in the transportation improvement program in the plan at the Atlanta Regional Commission. It's a study that will look at what types of alternative transportation studies or alternative transportation programs we may be able to provide over the next twenty years to twenty-five years at Douglas County that are feasible, that are acceptable to the citizens of the county and that will address the needs of certain population segments and certain persons in the county that don't have access to transportation. The effort will also look at our current program of services, the different types of services that we provide. It will look at how those services can be enhanced, how we can continue to expand those services and make those available. But as the population ages, as changes occur, as we gain access to more technology over time, there's going to be a lot of different ways that we can provide alternative trip environments for people who commute around the Atlanta region or for people who have just very simple trips that we address now through our voucher program. Trips to the doctor, trips to the hospital, trips to the grocery store. And, you know, this is all targeted towards the bigger regional issue, which is demand, managing the transportation demand on the entire system, improving air quality throughout the region. And we do more than our share now, twenty percent of all the van pool ridership in the metropolitan Atlanta region comes through our program now. And that's a testament to what our current programs are doing and the impact that those programs have.
That's to remind our directors winning awards.
That's exactly correct. And so, you know, we see this as an opportunity to look at what we're doing, to see how we can do things better, look at what future programs we might be able to provide and garner additional federal funding for that would be acceptable to the community. If shuttle buses in the future might be some positive type of service for the county, we'll do the engagement necessary through this process to see what the public might support, see what the numbers, the population, the employment numbers would support. Other types of programs that are all fitted around the, whatever the regional transit system becomes in the future. So it's a very important undertaking, Gary will direct this, I'll be involved. And Gary, do you have anything to add?
Randy, I think the reason I asked that question, how does that fit in with our comprehensive transportation study that we did a few years back?
It is a part and parcel of our comprehensive transportation plan. The CTP looks at a number of different elements, you know, not only roadway network issues, but other multimodal issues that we need to address over the next twenty-five years. Pedestrian and bicycle initiatives and also school-related transportation needs. School system's the largest traffic generator in the county. There's a component in the CTP that looks at that. So the multimodal portion of that CTP is a very important piece of a balanced system and that's what we're trying to achieve.
I think we all have some transportation questions right now. This is a study to tell us what we need in the future. Funding's a different issue, isn't it, especially in the Atlanta region. We had a meeting on Friday regarding House Bill one seventy, which we've all read, or most of us have read. I don't know if we understood what we read after we read it. But we are trying to determine right now if that is something that we could even support. You're taking the sales tax off of gasoline, that revenue that we're getting presently, that would go away and become an excise tax. But we've got our finance people now trying to determine, would we pick up money or would we lose money? So we're still trying to take a look and see what kind of impact HNTB would say. Again, it'll probably change a hundred times before the session's over. But I really don't know what it says yet, Congressman Lawke.
Randy, specifically, transportation planning, you know, doesn't happen in a vacuum. It's obviously related to your future land use planning, comprehensive plan and so forth and vice versa. None of that should happen without, in the context of, without a context with transportation. I have a very specific question, looking at our aging population and the ability of people to go to a doctor or grocery store without the advantage of a motorized vehicle. So you know where I'm back at again, sidewalks, trails, bicycles and so forth. Well, let's take a segment of this, take a hard look at those opportunities and how we interface with our future land use planning as it relates to aging population.
I think anytime you're looking at alternative transportation and alternatives to the single document automobile, accessibility becomes an issue. So as a carryover, when you look at these different types of programs, whether it be shuttle systems or jitney-type buses or other types of, even our van pool programs or even programs for our seniors, we have to look at how, as I said, as an outside effort to this, we have to complement those programs with getting the types of infrastructure put in place that would be needed. For example, one of the things that's going to be looked at here is park and ride lock facilities. How do we get people to those park and ride lock facilities? Where are they located? From a pedestrian and sidewalk perspective, you know, do people in the areas around those have the ability to walk to those and carpool or catch whatever alternative system is available to them at those locations? So to answer your question, Commissioner, I think we'll look at it, you know, at an outside ancillary part of this, but that would be another component of our comprehensive transportation plan. And as we start to develop these programs, then going back and keeping in balance those things, we've got to look at as we develop infrastructure for these things, the partnering infrastructure that goes along with it, we'll have to take a priority as part of that as well.
Yes, Randy, first of all, you said that we do pay about federal funds, the local match, do you know what the facility is?
Yes, it's twenty percent match and we have accounted for the local match in the budgeting process. So the money's in place for this.
This was actually included in the two thousand and fourteen budget.
It's a carryover, okay. And another thing, does this company conduct town hall meetings to find out what the public says they need? Do they have public?
They do all of that, they'll set up a website, they'll even go out to the mall and locations like that. In other words, they won't, they don't necessarily ask people to come to them. They'll be doing a lot of going out to the people to reach them.
So there'll be a lot of public engagement?
Yeah, and that was one of the things that attracted us to this firm, is their public engagement plan. It's very robust and I think they're going to be able to reach a lot of people. And very important to this is making sure that we get the right people in the county that, within these different population groups and aging groups, to become participated, to be a participant in the process. And they've developed a five-step follow-up program that hopefully will, they'll follow that process and get people exposed to everything that we're looking at and they will become a part of that process.
Commissioner Ross? I'm going to piggyback on Adam Dyer's point, which is, the public input is imperative. Because you mentioned a couple of points, you know, there's a demand analysis that should come out of this, right? Which provides feedback into our own decision-making process. And that's sort of why I've been pushing on this for the past six months, which is, there's no way we can make long-term strategic decisions on transportation without this type of input. decisions on transportation without this type of input. When I hear that Douglas County represents twenty percent of the regional demand?
For van pools.
For van pools.
For the van pool program.
I mean, intuitively, we already know that there's demand here, right? So, we just, I mean, we represent this small county, it's a little bit equipped, represents twenty percent of demand, van pools. All right? So, when you think about that, you start thinking about the bigger picture, you're like, okay, what else is here? And I think we've had this conversation, because this is not new. But, Mr. Chairman, I guess, it's more of a, you know, any decision we make regarding transportation, and specifically not even understanding, you know, what the demand is, we've got to lay this out over time, says, okay, how do you fund this once we figure out how we fund it? Mr. Chairman? And so, I guess my question is, how long will this take for us to get input based on some of the current decisions that we have to make regarding transportation funding? Is this like an eighteen-month process, two-year process, for them to give us our pound of paper? I just read the two thousand transportation study this weekend, it was about this thick. And that was a long time ago, that was fifteen years ago. So, how long is it going to take?
Look, I'll say this, and then I'll ask Gary to chime in too. We expect the study to be tied up and bundled up and packaged within a year, and maybe sooner. But the good thing about the types of programs that may come out of this study is that we have an ongoing conduit of funding from the federal transit administration. So, in the form of the fifty-three oh seven funds that we receive. So, once this study's completed and we get all of these initiatives, and part of what we will receive from the consultant is an action plan that goes along with each of these different types of initiatives, along with some prioritization of the things that they recommend. Once we have that, then we will be able to take our fifty-three oh seven funding and start to allocate those priorities into our program of the projects, and build, start to bring those things online over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. I'll ask, Gary, did you speak to the fifty-three oh seven process?
Well, we do have an annual allocation of fifty-three oh seven money, and that's basically quite as funded the majority of our program for the last twenty-something years. All of the county projects that we undertake are, in the past, they've been an eighty, ten, ten split, with eighty percent coming from the federal government, ten percent coming from the state, and ten percent coming locally. Of course, the state money is dried up right now, we hope eventually we can get that back. But we do have that big eighty percent portion that we're pretty much gearing to be available from the federal government. I really expect to have the results of the study back before the end of the year. I don't know that it would have back in time to put much in the next year's budget.
You said the end of this year?
Yes, sir, the end of this year. And when we brought the consultants out to talk to them about submitting a proposal to us, one thing that we stressed to them is that while we want a long-term study, to where we have our aspirations of what we want to do fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, we also want a short-term plan of things that we can actually do within the next three to five years. Because as Commissioner Robinson said, we already know that there's a need for additional transportation out here. Every statistic that we've seen says that there are a lot of people in Douglas County who have limited transportation options or no transportation options. And depending on the funding that is available to us from the federal level and what we can provide as a local match, we really want to see some additional programs up and running in the next three to five years, or even sooner if possible.
The question is, right now, though, with the uncertainty of federal funding, you know, they can't get a bill that's longer than six months. You can't even design a intersection in six months. But it all depends on whether the federal government continues to fund transportation infrastructure. And right now, they've not made that commitment. So, Randy, what impact would that have on fifty-three oh seven funds?
Well, I mean, Congress, if Congress takes some affirmative action, really tries to solve the problem, you know, our hope would be that things would move in accordance with what we've seen in the past in terms of funding levels. As Gary said, this, all of these programs that we operate through our Transportation Services Division are almost wholly dependent upon federal funding. Eighty percent of these funds come from the federal government. You know, Chairman, I'm hearing different ideas that have been floated about how to continue MAP twenty-one, or to bring online some of these new transportation infrastructure bills that have been talked about. But I think that we're at a point right now where, from a national perspective, there's no real strong understanding of how we'll be able to continue at a federal level the types of transportation programs that we have funding for now. And that's why you're seeing the General Assembly do the kinds of things that they're doing with House Bill one seventy, and with trying to figure out ways for local communities and state governments to generate more of these transportation dollars, and cut the purse strings, if you will, from the federal government before, I mean, as we know they're going to be cut from us. So, it's really a national issue, and I don't see a clear answer coming from the federal government as it relates to how these programs will be sustained over the next ten, fifteen years. So, that's an entirely separate challenge that we're going to have to deal with. And, you know, I think that the House Bill one seventy that you spoke of, we've got a team of people. Jennifer has been great about getting us information. We're working with Jennifer Hallman, Mark Teal, myself, trying to interpret what this House bill is really going to be about. I got some information late Friday that defined basically what proportion of our fuel, motor fuel taxes are relative to all the other sales taxes that we collect. And it looks like about ten point one percent of the total taxes that are collected locally here, the total sales taxes, looks like about ten point one percent of that is motor fuel taxes. Now, the House Bill one seventy being a conversionary bill where it converts the sales tax to an excise tax, and gives you all the authority to pass an ordinance to set your own excise tax, we don't, we haven't been able to get our heads around converting that to a number so that we can know what kind of funding replacement would be put in place if y'all do that. Number one, and number two, you know, all, if this law passes, then it's going to take some, take away some of your discretion about how that money's spent, because it's going to go entirely to transportation if the law passes. So, we want to know two things. Number one, we want to know that you're not going to lose any money when we go from an excise, I mean, a sales tax to an excise tax. And then, number two, we want to know what amount of money we're going to have access to, albeit will be, we know will be directed exclusively toward transportation.
And the other question, Randy, is that, you know, we continue to hear coming out of the General Assembly, no tax increase. All right. What it's doing is going into louts with the Douglas County Work Commission, are we going to have to raise taxes three percent? Are we going to have to raise taxes six percent to get the same amount of revenue that we get today on sales taxes? And, you know, you can call it what you want to, you can say we adopt an ordinance, the public will think that's a tax increase. But you've got two opportunities. First three percent, you do it by ordinance. The second three percent, you have to get the public on a referendum to approve it. So, I want to make sure we get these numbers right, that how much we're losing and how much we're gaining. This is the old, every time the General Assembly meets, we go through a process like this. But we saw it coming, and I went to Jennifer about a month ago now, and asked her to start doing the process, finding out in the state of Georgia how much money we get off the sales tax.
And it took us about a month.
Took them a month to give us some numbers, and I'm sure, I'm not sure they're correct as we have them. It looks like about four million. I did get a call from Representative Alexander, and I think I called Mr. Robinson as well, and she said, I just wanted to know if y'all can support this. And I said, well, we don't know yet. And she thought that that number was more like three million. I don't know where she got her number, but that's what she told me, she said she thought it was about three million. But we'll have to continue to stay on top of this and let our delegation know, is this something we can support?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got the ten point one percent number late Friday, and I don't know if that's correct or not. But if it is, we've got to somehow figure out a way to look at it and convert that into gallons of motor fuel so that we can then know what that three percent, or three cents per gallon actually means.
Well, you know, it's hard to come up with that billion and a half dollar they say they need every year without raising taxes, and they're saying they're not raising taxes, so.
State taxes.
State taxes. They let us run that.
The pushing.
Okay. Well, this is something that's going to be ongoing, and I'm sure it's going to change a number of times, but let's stay on top of it to make sure we know whether we can support this legislation or not.
What we want to do with this study is to have something in place that we can go ahead and do when we seduce, see what kind of funding is available for us, because, as you said, there is a need now, it's the transportation options that are becoming worse.
Absolutely. Okay. Under tab twelve, approval of bid award to C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Baldwin Paving Company, and E.R. Snell Contracting for the purchase of asphalt materials required by the Department of Transportation through a period of February first through July thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. Why, just six months, Bill?
The asphalt companies are unwilling to.
They won't go any further.
Because of the fluctuations in the price of oil, which in turn causes a fluctuation in the price of asphalt. I did have a discussion with one of the vendors about going to twelve months, and his take was, if you're willing to pay a higher price over that twelve-month period to ensure that I may hold, I'll give you a twelve-month price.
We'll take six months. I think that's a good idea.
At least for now, and we'll continue discussing.
There was an announcement that the oil drillers have gone on strike, and so you're going to see the gas prices.
They've got to get that price back up to three or four dollars, huh? Boy, that's wonderful, going to the station and get thirty dollars worth that shows up on your gauge. Okay. Under tab thirteen, authorization to execute the two thousand and fifteen New World Systems Standard Software Maintenance Agreement. That's the S S M A, in the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars for the period of April thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, through March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Mr. Pete?
Yes, sir, this is the continuing maintenance agreement on our New World software of what this will provide to is any upgrades, any new releases to the existing software, temporary fixes to anything that breaks, the revisions to documentation, telephone support, and then our ability for Mr. Martin and his staff and other members of the county staff to participate in group meetings that New World has proposed to study. We recommend that the county give us the authority, or give the chairman the authority to go ahead and sign this maintenance agreement for two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Tab fourteen, authorization to accept an option for right-of-way purchase of Douglas County-owned property needed for the Mann Road Bankhead Highway, US seventy-eight, State Route Eight intersection period project, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Chairman, this is the, as you said, Mann Road and Bankhead Highway intersection project, it will completely alter the character of that intersection as it exists today. Bankhead Highway will be lowered, there will be a major signalized intersection, Mann Road and what is now Mann Road, Mason Creek Road, and US seventy-eight will provide direct access to I twenty at Post Road. The county owns two parcels of land out there, one is the Winston Fire Station, and some of that frontage along Bankhead Highway is needed for the project. I'll tell you, this is an eight million dollar project. We worked out a deal with the state where they're going to fund it entirely. We've been working on this for the last seven years. And they're going to entirely fund the right-of-way acquisition, the construction, and they funded the preliminary year of the project is expected to go forward to construction at fiscal year sixteen, which would be, we're expecting it to be led to construction, and this is all caveated by the discussion we just had about federal transportation funding. But we're expecting it to go forward in the first quarter of two thousand and sixteen, probably early spring of two thousand and sixteen. But this is to authorize the chairman to sign these options. The frontage off of the Winston Fire Station is one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight point six-two square feet. It has a fair market value of thirty-six hundred dollars. I've met with Chief Spencer, we looked at the site, we looked at the driveway as it exists today, we looked at the deceleration lane and all the peripheral area around the driveway. And as part of the project plans, the deceleration lane will remain, the driveway will be put back in kind to what exists, which is concrete, and we'll make sure that it's the appropriately rated contract, concrete to support fire apparatus vehicles. And the grades, the grade differential between the driveway and the roadway will remain pretty much at a two point oh nine percent slope, so there's not going to be a whole lot of change, even though Bankhead Highway to the east of the driveway is going to be lowered by about six to eight feet. But they should, they'll be back pretty much on grade once they get into the area where the fire station is. So, that's one parcel. And again, the option offers the county thirty-six hundred dollars for that area of frontage. They will actually need, as I said, one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight point six-two square feet, which is equivalent to zero point zero two six acres. The second parcel on the same project is located at Mason Creek Road and Connors Road, it's the little intersection behind the fire station. And I don't know how the county ever come to own this piece of property, but it's immediately at that intersection. It's a piece of property that's about fifteen percent of an acre, zero point one five. It, they need for the project only zero point one 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 acres, which is about half of this piece of property. They've offered, it has a fair market value based on their independent appraisal of five hundred dollars. What I would recommend to the board is that unless the board sees some reason to keep this, or to keep the remainder of this property, the remainder is only going to be zero point zero three nine acres, so it's just a little slither of property. I would recommend to the board that we go back and counter to the state that they purchase the entire piece at fair market value, which that would probably be a little more than five hundred, probably closer to a thousand dollars. Unless somebody can tell me a reason that the county, or the reason that the board might want to keep this property, I don't see where you all, I don't even know how the county comes to own the property.
Where exactly is that, Randy?
Well, you know where the fire station is and the little road that goes back behind the fire station?
Yes.
Yeah, and then where it intersects at Mason Creek, just west to the west, it's right at the south, it's right at that corner of the intersection, on the side opposite the fire station.
That used to be our old fire station.
Oh, maybe that's it, yes.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, I think that might be the, are we talking about the building itself, or?
No, there's nothing.
The slither of a parcel.
Beside where the old station was. There may be some.
It's on the other side of the road, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, where he's parked.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where our fire station is, about there.
Well, this is, yeah, this is a, like I said, it's less than fifteen percent of an acre. It has no development.
Yeah, a dump.
Yeah, we have a dumpster only at one end.
And, you know, but in total, the property's worth about, based on fair markets, probably worth just around a thousand. worth just around a thousand dollars. But unless y'all wanna keep it.
I don't see any reason to, but y'all.
I mean, we'll make sure, we'll make sure that there's no utilities or, you said septic systems.
No, that was on the other side.
But, uh, I mean, if there is a reason, I'll I'll do more research. If there is a reason that 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 we could find that needs to be brought back to you, we'll bring it back.
He's back at it when he sold it to, uh, whoever he sold that, the old one to the old one, too. We pay all checks for that.
All right. Okay, we on under discussion items, uh, we'll go to executive session on seventeen, but let's, Randy, let's talk about, uh, A R C tip amendments, some projects we might, uh, turn in with the A R C.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the the Atlanta Regional Commission just opened up about a week and a half ago, a call for projects, uh, that would be funded under the Surface Transportation Program, and, uh, there's about nineteen, I'm sorry, there's about, uh, nineteen million dollars, I think, available in two thousand sixteen, but this this call for projects is over fiscal years, uh, two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen. Uh, they kinda wanna set it at a maximum of, uh, award of five million per year over those fiscal years. So, uh, these applications are due in, uh, to A R C on the on the on April sixth, and there are, there's quite a lot of analysis and a lot of detail, the applications are about twenty-seven to twenty-nine pages in length, uh, and so we've gotta go through a process. I've identified, uh, four projects, all of which are part of our comprehensive transportation plan. There will be a twenty percent match on these projects, but I wanted to give you all a heads up or make a recommendation to you, uh, and and get you to give me your feedback on on which of these projects, or if there are others that you feel like should be pursued, then we can we can do so. But within the criteria that's been put out, I've identified four projects, uh, the Chapel Hill Road, Diverging Diamond Interchange, which now with the service delivery agreement, uh, changes, I think that we could probably go forward with that, uh, without any resistance from the city, although I would still say that we do do need to notify them and get their opinion as to whether or not they, uh, they're okay with us pursuing the D D I.
That's almost a five million dollar project, can you say?
Four point two million dollars.
Four point two. And now it's telling me again what you said about the five million.
Well, the 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 department, I mean, the Atlanta Regional Commission has set, uh, a fiscal year maximum allocation of around five million dollars for each project, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
But but but, again, these pro- this project call will be for fiscal year two thousand sixteen up through two thousand nineteen, so conceivably you could ask for, you know, part of the engineering in sixteen, uh, part of the right-of-way in seventeen or eighteen, and then the construction in nineteen. So you can you can break it up into pieces, uh, but.
And you're talking about the diverging diamond at Chapel Hill Road that we basically had approved last year.
Yes, sir.
And they and they screwed it up.
Yeah, and I feel.
Well, that conversation, I think we should have that conversation with the city. Uh, the match on that project was one point two million, if I'm.
It's twenty percent. I hadn't run the math lately, but it it was, but the the match on any of these would be be twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
But I'll run those numbers out and let y'all know, but the, yeah, the diverging, I feel confident that the diverging diamond, we basically may hold to resubmit it.
Yes.
I mean, it was the number two rated project out of eighty ro- eighty projects that were submitted in the region. It was the number two rated project, uh, and the benefit cost analysis showed, uh, a return on investment of about nine eighteen to one. So, uh, it's a very quick project to implement as as major interchanges go. It's an innovative way to address, uh, constraints at freeway access points. The chief engineer, uh, who is now the commissioner.
Yes.
Oh, this happened within a month. Uh, the chief en- or the the former chief engineer, who is now the commissioner, uh, has made a call, uh, on local governments to find ways to deal with these lower-cost, innovative-type solutions to solve some of these problems. So, project rated real high, I think if we submit it, I think it'll get selected, but I've got three more.
Okay, well, I think we need to have that conversation with the city, even though we've taken over the Chapel Hill Road.
I agree.
Uh, I would like to see them, uh, be a part of the local match of that twenty percent.
It's worth asking.
Yeah, I think that one point two was too high.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it's like eight eight hundred thousand or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But let's have that conversation with the city and tell us about the other project.
Okay, the second project, Mr. Chairman, is one y'all heard me talk about a lot, and that's the Lee Road Extension Project.
Yes.
Uh, it's a fifteen million dollar project. It would extend Lee Road from State Route ninety-two over to Beaumont Road so that you have direct continuity, uh, to Chapel Hill Road, uh, all over to Central Church Road, all the way over to Highway five. Uh, it's referred to in our comprehensive transportation plan as a southern interarc project. I think it's the most important new location roadway that we have in our plan, and it will will alter mobility patterns throughout the county. If you live in the Chapel Hill area or in the, uh, area around Chapel Hill Road where the gut of the most of the residential is in this county, uh, it will provide direct access to the new Lee Road interchange, uh, that which is important because it gives people alternatives to use the Chapel Hill Road to go north, to get on the interstate, to go east, so you can start to move east immediately from 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 that area. And then, secondly, and maybe just as important, it is by by definition of the marking people who did our L C I ninety-two report and the L C I study for State Route ninety-two, uh, L C I, uh, it is by definition the linchpin that will create the market area for that L C I. So so that market area, all of those rooftops on Chapel Hill Road, this will create a new market area for them and a new new commercial tax digest for the county to to bring, uh, to to bear, uh, you know, the impetus to create the Livable Centers Initiative that is, uh, you know, is, uh, at, uh, that that location. By the way, part of this call is for L C I funding, so we could actually submit that project probably through two different categories, both the L C I funding and the Surface Transportation Program funding.
Okay.
Then the third project is the South Sweetwater Road Project. Mr. Chairman, it was a T I project, it's a nineteen million dollar project. Uh, you all know that the Lee Road Interchange is scheduled to open, uh, to traffic in October of this year. Uh, it's gonna create very latent demand from the north along North Sweetwater, Bankhead Highway, South Sweetwater Road, to get additional traffic into that Lee Road Interchange. It is a nineteen million dollar project, it was a T I project, it was at one time a greater materials project, but because funding ran out, uh, we were not able to, uh, complete the project or complete the engineering. The engineering is, uh, engineering plans are sitting on the shelf right now, they are about thirty-five to forty percent complete, so we would simply pick up those plans, dust them off, get them started again, uh, and this project fits well with the, uh, the call for project criteria. And at about five million a year, we could get this project in the pipeline over the next, uh, four or five years. And then finally, the the next project that I think fits well, and again, is a part of our comprehensive transportation plan, is the widening of, uh, State Route ninety-two, uh, one sixty-six to State Route seventy in Fulton County. Uh, and this is, let me define where this is at. This is at low old Lower River Road, the intersection at Old Lower River Road and ninety-two, State Route seventy, State Route one sixty-six, you know how the state is about, all their number systems, but so it's that portion. It would basically continue the ninety-two, four-lane median divided section across the river. The state has fully designed the project, they've committed to buy the right-of-way. There is about five mil- it's sitting on the shelf, ready to go. There's about five million dollars of local reimbursable utilities. We don't have the five million dollars. If we did, we could sign an agreement today to probably get the project moving here. But this would be a good project for us to fund under this call for projects and get the the get eighty percent of the reimbursable utility costs, which as I said is about five million, and then that would release this project and get it moving towards, uh, towards construction. So those are the four projects that I've identified.
Those are all good projects. One more question, Randy, uh, and I get this a lot from residents in the Lithi Springs area. Say we did get the funding on Lee Road to Beaumont, and we don't get the funding on South Sweetwater, how are you gonna manage all that traffic that's gonna put into that corner up there?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you kinda have to look at that from two perspectives. Everything south of the interchange, we're gonna have a lot of reserve capacity at the Lee Road Interchange once it's open to traffic, 'cause you remember going eastbound, we've got dual left turns, uh, and we we'll have a left turn going westbound, but most people aren't gonna move to the east just to go back and turn west.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So so the cut line is kind of north of I twenty and south of I twenty, so that's that's the way you're reasoning that. But but the 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 project north of I twenty is a good project as well, they're all projects that we need to pursue, uh, while I have some consternation about House Bill one seventy-seven and how much, I mean, this presents the picture that we could be moving more projects forward if we had local more local.
Right, okay. All right, uh, under tab sixteen, discussion of potential site location for the new animal shelter. Who's gonna talk about that? Bill?
I'm gonna start.
Okay.
If you would please find the black and white legal size, yes, sir, that I provided to the board members. This this document, uh, was one of the original documents that we put together for discussions on the site plans with the commission. Um, let's just kinda go through them page by page. Uh, the first site is the original site that was discussed, uh, which is up by the old dog park. So the first site that we considered when we were talking about, uh, Deer Lake Park, was placing the the shelter up next to the existing dog park, and that's what site one is. Site two actually places the shelter down along the, uh, the tree line down at the, uh, where the existing batting cages are, uh, and will continue to provide a buffer between, uh, again, as Ms. Fulcham talked earlier, uh, we're able to provide buffers against both Mack Road and back, uh, to the residential sections that do front on Fairland Road. And please disregard any of the things you see that says livestock.
Yeah.
Again, these were some of the original plans that we drew, uh, so the architect was really working outside the box when he drew these for us, so just ignore anything that says livestock.
And outside the animal shelter.
Yes, sir, absolutely, absolutely. So that's site two, and that's the site that's been recommended by the Animal Control Advisory Board for your rec- for your consideration. The next slide is slide three, and this is the slide, the site, I'm sorry, the site that actually put the shelter immediately on Mack Road, immediately across from the residences on the other side of Mack Road. And this was the original, uh, site that the Animal Control Advisory Board presented as a recommendation to the commission. And the last of the four sites, uh, after we looked at the topography, um, and just the way the park was situated today, we thought that we could have a fourth site, and, uh, that's the site that would be, uh, north of of, um, of the existing, uh, community center, the community building, and would take in probably what today is today's the skate park. So if we were to go with this site, the skate park would have to be relocated to another location in the shelter, I mean, opposite in the shelter, in the park. So those are the four sites. Uh, again, uh, the Animal Control Advisory Board is has recommended to the commission that site number two be, uh, approved as the site for the new shelter.
Ma'am, here's questions. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, Bill, um, site one, which is right up there where the dog park is next, um, I know sewage is a a factor, yes. Is there not restaurant right there at Deer Lake over here on this road that sewage could be hooked to instead of.
Anything that's over there would be septic.
Huh?
Anything that's over there would be all septic.
The restaurant is septic.
So our desire is to have the shelter on sewer lines, which will have to be run out to Fairland Road, and site one is also where we found, I'm sorry.
It'd have to be run out to Fairland Road.
That's that's where the sewer line is, it'll have to be tapped out to Fairland.
Oh, I thought it was on Mack Road.
No, ma'am, it's over Fairland Road.
So you'd have to go through somebody's yard to get there?
You'd have to go out to the, uh, you'd have to at least go out to Mack Road and and go go down the right-of-way on Mack Road.
Is there any way that you can do a straight line? I don't guess. Um, okay, and in site number two, may I just ask, uh, it looks like the skate park has been moved.
Again, the skate park, um, you'll see that the skate park, uh, is kinda under the livestock paddocks, the the skate park has not been moved, it's just, and those paddocks are not there, that's not a part of the plan.
So it goes under where the livestock is, so it would not have.
Exactly.
Now, the skate park, is it a, um, permanent concrete, is that any?
Yes, ma'am, good see. We anticipate, we kinda value the the cost of moving it about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so we don't wanna have that extra expense added to the the county to to get the new shelter in.
Do you have any idea if you went with, say, um, number one, site one, if you, which is away from the houses, how much more that would cost?
Well, site one sits on rock, that's the site when we did the, uh, geohydro.
It's built on rock, though.
Absolutely, but just to do, to put the utilities in, uh, depending on how high the rock was, you may have to actually pour through some of the rock to get the utilities and the sewer line in. So that's the only added expense, uh, other than also, uh, the egress and exit, uh, egress and, uh, able to be able to get from Mack Road back up to that site. Would take a little more.
And what kind of buffer is proposed if you go with site two as far as the houses right behind it?
Pat, you spoke with the architect, would you repeat what he told you this weekend?
Yes, and I meant to bring it, I printed it out. I spoke with him by email, not just in person, but he said that, um, that there could be a forty-foot buffer, a landscape buffer, along Mack Road, like, as you just come into Mack Road and the park is immediately on your left, it would be a forty, it could be a forty-foot, not just bushes, but a deeper, uh, landscape offset all the way down for forty feet. Then he said going up towards, uh, if you're driving into Mack Road and the shelter's here, there would also be landscaping on our property from up where the tree line is, down to the road, so that when you're coming into Deer Lake Park, you would not see the shelter there either. So it would kinda be buffered. He was also talking about a berm that could be between the road and the landscape buffer, and then a berm, and he also spoke about with a landscape buffer and a berm, that it would also reduce any kind of noise, like trucks entering or or anything like that, there would be a big noise reduction with a berm and landscape buffer also. That was Joe Watkins with.
So the, are there gonna be like a fence, wooden fence or something like that between the houses and the animal shelter?
It'd be pretty landscaping.
Well, I mean, heavy, like trees, cypress.
Big bush, yeah, probably something like, more like cypresses that would grow quickly, yes.
There's an existing tree line, a forest line between the the houses and the shelter. Now, we're we're going to add to that, but there's already an existing.
I I understand that it, um, it's just.
Oh, you mean on behind the shelter, where the the houses on Fairland Road? Okay, right there. There would not be a, uh, a fence or anything, I wouldn't think, because the trees are so tall, they couldn't see the shelter anyway. They couldn't see the shelter anyway from, from the homes on Fairland Road.
But it looks like our property backs up right in to somebody's house right here, does it not? Is this, this line that goes across here?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that our property line?
It is.
And so, um, but we're still not gonna tear down the trees and all this?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. We're gonna enhance that. We will not take down?
We're not gonna cushion garbage all over the place back around there, please?
Robinson.
Hey, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna piggyback off of Guy's point, um, which is two, two things. One, and this is a quick question, which is, for this design, and I, I couldn't tell, and again, it's very small for me, so I'll just ask the question, animals, do they have a chance to sort of run around in this, or are we keeping it self-contained? It's just, it's not?
There will be an opportunity with some outside runs, fencing for, for a limited number of dogs at a time to be outside, whether they're socializing with potential adoptees, adopters, I guess is the right word, or if, uh, if we're doing training or other socialization with the animal, uh, just to give them some outside time. But there will never be an opportunity for a large number of dogs to be outside at one time. The intent is to keep the, the dogs in-house, uh, un, unless we're doing some type of activity with them.
Okay, that's, all right, so let me, let me move on. And again, this is, hopefully, we're gonna put this to rest, and I ask the chairman, hopefully, we can get this behind us, but allow me to sort of finally speak, because this is something that, that's obviously in my commission district, and I sort of follow this from a passive perspective, because again, it's never been my avocation, plus or minus for animals per se, that's just not my, my focus per se in, in being elected right now. But seeing that it's in my, you know, my backyard, I've gotta speak to it. Um, and I still struggle with the process that we're going about, because we're making a, a selection on a specific site, but I don't think we ever got to the place of making a decision on where. Two separate things. We're picking a spot within a bigger place, but let's just assume a decision was made, it was legal. I'm gonna move through that. Um, my challenge with this is there's a flaw. Now, I want the administration to rethink about this. There's a flaw in how you thought about, we're gonna put this at the park, because there's a lot of people that are gonna be coming there, and that's sort of our impetus to sort of don't kill and all this, but I'm like, but everybody doesn't come to Deer Lake, right? Typically, geographically, we're ready to take it to a park that was built in our immediate area. Think about that. So you're putting emphasis on just Deer Lake people who patronize it as being able to be the ones that's gonna carry the adoption of these animals. Think about that, all right? So when I, when I heard, I, and I just sort of listened and listened and listened, I listened to everybody's comments and this little time, not today, but it was just one of those, like, there's a flaw here, right? And so what I still go back to is just the best, best place for this facility. I look at all the other things. I go back to downtown jail. I look at right down this street, right here. You know, we didn't wanna put it, city didn't want us to put it downtown, you know? We didn't wanna put it here because we didn't wanna mess up our property of the new jail, you know? I'm like, drop it at Mount Carmel, all these things, because I'm listening to the logic, says it needs to be centrally located. We wanna get people to come in, because we don't wanna go all the way up, you know, sort of the landfill. But I'm like, well, you're putting all the emphasis on the local people who patronize Deer Lake, right? Because you're not gonna necessarily, like, we walk around Deer Lake, that's just the people who walk around Deer Lake, not people at Boundary, not people out there at all the other parks. So, all right, no problem. The other part is, when I think about this, 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 this is a utility. This is a function, right? This is part of public safety, right? This is really not an enhancement to the park, or at least I haven't heard the logic or the argument that shows me how this is going to, you know, it's like an anchor tenant. This becomes the anchor tenant, right? All right, I know I've got a football field, a basketball field that are sort of associated with it. We can all just say this is all junk. I'm not gonna split hairs about parcels of land or anything like that. Let's not do that. Let's just say Deer Lake for the sake of conversation. And when I, when I listen to this, and I'm like, and again, you have to listen to all voices, right? It, it can't be exclusive, right? And I'm thinking about that property value, more than we don't want our property value alone here to be deteriorated by the Dog Pound being there. We're gonna drop this right in the park. Put this right next to people's plant. And I'm sitting here, I'm like, okay, so what is the county's commitment? Because I, I, it doesn't necessarily have to be either or. I believe in what's called the tyranny of Anne. Well, let's see both. How, how do we ensure the preservation of that immediate area? And buffers alone is not enough, but think about the utility here is a dog pound. Animal shelter, whatever you wanna call it, these are my comments. These are my official comments. You're gonna put them right next to a very established neighborhood. This is a utility, right? It's an animal shelter. It's not a new community center. It's nothing that really enhances the park. We can rationalize whatever we want to by saying, okay, this is an outlet, this is, but I'm like, yeah, go back to the original comment I made. The logic is flawed. You're putting all the emphasis on that immediate area right there to carry this facility. So my, my comments to this is that right now, and I don't know what the administration's position is, is that how do we ensure Deer Lake Park is enhanced, that the anchor tenant of this park is not an animal shelter? I mean, are we committing to, uh, I don't wanna say roads, not just use it as a, roads or parking lots or other amenities. Some of these amenities are gonna go away. But moving a bocce from here to there really doesn't affect dropping a five million dollar facility right there to sort of save that added value. It does not, like, moving a skateboard park around does not buffer the impact of an animal shelter right there. It doesn't. It doesn't impact everybody's houses alone, that strip. It doesn't matter if it's eight, eight hundred, eight thousand, eighty thousand. You're not getting impacted. So I guess, has, has any thought, and I only got one question, this is it. Has the administration made a commitment to Deer Lake? Or specifically, are you doing anything to offset the impact that this is gonna have over time? That this animal shelter is gonna be right there? That's the question.
Okay, Mr. McCall, here.
Um, I kinda feel like to talk about your last point, so.
Can I get the question answered, though?
Oh, all right.
I need the question answered.
All right, what, what was the question again, now? Let me have it one more time.
Yeah, the question was, would it?
I think I was gonna answer it. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I don't, just by chairman?
I think I was gonna answer it.
All right, go ahead.
Going to endeavor, I'm going to do the endeavor. Uh, and, you know, we lose the, uh, I think we lose site, I'm on place of background like, like you did, Commissioner.
Yep.
Place of background. Uh, this site was not selected, it was not at the top of the list for a long time. Uh, we explored several options. We looked at the list, uh, some of us looked at the list of all county-owned properties. We focused on, let's keep it at the old site, and that was acceptable for two major reasons. It's, uh, lack of centrality to our population, it's remotest, and being an septic system. Uh, we discussed the old jail site. There was strong resistance to that from the city, as well as surrounding homeowners. In the context of the old jail site, uh, it also does have the, I think, longer-term potential for real economic and, and rejuvenation for Douglas County, Douglasville, in that area, that property can be sold and used for mixed-use development. So it would be, it would be a shame to put something down the middle of it, in the periphery of it, that would impede the, the economic development of what could be revenue-generating properties for every county taxpayer. So we didn't arrive at the Deer Lake decision, or I should say, the Deer Lake decision wasn't arrived at without going through a litany of other possibilities, and it was not done lightly. And the perception was that it was just, this was just a snap decision at some point in time. Well, you know, going back to December of twenty thirteen, as we discussed in town hall meetings and, and other venues and in the newspaper, it wasn't like this was just sprung on people in the middle of last year. This, this site was, was announced in twenty thirteen, December. Plenty of opportunity for public input. Got a lot of, a lot of emails, largely in support of the site. It's a tremendous site. And having said that, I, I'm appreciative, I, I respect, and I'm sensitive to the people who live nearby. So let's talk about enhancement to the park, uh, your specific question. What is the construction of the, the present community gymnasium center? If I recall, it's kind of metal prefab. Uh, the restroom's concession areas in Baldwin's. My recollection is the concrete block. Uh, there's also a maintenance building in, in Deer Lake Park for equipment and so forth. My recollection is that's a metal prefab building. I have a firm belief, in my opinion, and I talked about a specific site, that the construction and architectural standards for this building will be ahead and shoulders above anything that's presently in Deer Lake Park in terms of construction, details, and appearance. That, to me, sets the standard for anything else that comes along in Deer Lake Park. So I can actually consider this building, not talking about what it is. I mean, it could be, it could be a county call center, nine-one-one, or whatever, but the building itself will be a very clear enhancement of Deer Lake Park. Look at the community center that's, uh, in this out, I call it an out bar, so that's not really a good term. Um, I think it's concrete block. So I see this building as, as a very clear enhancement to what we're gonna set as standard for Deer Lake Park and frankly, every other park in Douglas County, as we've had. We've seen what we've built in, in the Lithia Springs Park, and things that happened down the Boundary Waters. They're all head and shoulders, appearance-wise. I'm not talking about functionality or use or anything like that. They're all head and shoulders above Deer Lake. Deer Lake needs, needs a good face lift overall. It, it needs a good, sound, comprehensive plan, what we do with the buildings that are there now, and how we can enhance them to bring them up to the standard of what we're setting in place in front of this animal shelter. I have some other comments, but, uh, I've got other things, but I'll, I'll yield, uh, back to the chairman addressing just that enhancement issue.
One, one thing, as, as far as enhancements, though, we've not thrown Deer Lake Park, Deer Lake Park to the side, folks. This last year, we spent eighty-seven thousand dollars to resurface the parking lot. We redid the, uh, maintenance building that you talked about. We spent multi-dozen thousands of dollars on the, uh, aging gym that we have over there. The only gym we have in the whole county. Uh, it looks good. Uh, we continue to make upgrades, and I think we can continue with a landscaping plan, resurface the parking lot in this adjacent piece of property that we're putting this, uh, animal shelter, not Dog Pound, but animal shelter in. Uh, and I think it's an enhancement as well. It's not going to look like an animal shelter. It's gonna look like a very nice building that, uh, you won't see all that well unless you turn into the park, and then you'll see, you'll see this, this building. But, uh, we don't expect this neighborhood to carry this, uh, facility, Commissioner. Uh, the reason that we're considering this location is a central location convenient to most people in Douglas County. Um, and we can make this thing work. I can understand the residents not wanting to sell it there, but no matter where we put it, when first thing we did, when we talked about putting it where the old nine-one-one center was, as residents didn't want it there, along with the city as well. But, um, you know, information that I'm getting, emails, telephone calls, running into people on the street, the majority of the people support this location. And, uh, again, uh, this, this decision was made, or we started talking about this decision in December of two thousand thirteen. I've had ten chats with the chairmans during that period of time. Kelly had a meeting down at, inside the Deer Lake, uh, facility down there and invited me to come, and I did come. But, uh, it's not something that we've just come up with in the last two or three months. This is something that we've been talking about for over a year now, so I'm ready to move forward. I'm ready to take the recommendation of the, of the, uh, Animal Control Board, who have worked very hard, uh, on this project, and, uh, I'm ready to move forward with it. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, as far as the, uh, you know, relying on Deer Lake Park to support animal shelter, let me just say, I've been a resident out here for many years, and I live way in the western end of it. I played tennis there with Alpha. I was a member of the league there. So I went to Deer Lake Park, not because I lived there, but because I have been out to courts and everything. I've played tennis there. Been there at the arts and craft shows in the, the building there, and numerous dog shows. Uh, when I was a member of Share House and everything. So I'm, I'm saying that that park draws other people than just the neighboring people. It's not just a neighborhood park. I would much rather see it, uh, the animal shelter built, uh, where it just did not bother anybody. But I don't know of a site, the, the big enhancement is that we do own it. And I would like for the county manager to kinda explain, you know, this was bought with, like, splash money. Uh, did you not say this was, this part, this added part was, uh, bought with splash money? But was it bought as, what is the law say about us using it for a, uh, a facility like the animal?
I think y'all can do whatever you wanna do. The actual financing of this park, this part of the park, two thousand two splash by bond or referendum, including informational brochures, which created, I'm reading, because I drafted this before, which created by a candidate following, had two items, one says lands for park and open, open space. The other said, we're gonna expand Deer Lake Park. And B, construction of the skate park was also the brochure. Items that were accomplished as additional piece of land was required, were required adjacent Deer Lake Park, park. And at least some of the additional land purchased are gonna survive, whatever this plan is, is what I understand. The skate park, I'd be, was constructed, so I don't think it's an issue anymore for, as far as repurposing is concerned. Um, basically, you have two parcels of land. Uh, this is not just my research. Just going to the state, going with a developmental service to figure out what are we actually talking about. Uh, based upon the information that we understand from finance, the March two thousand two splash, bond or referendum that was approved, the money was used to buy this land in question, which is adjacent to Deer Lake Park, without designation of a particular project on it. Parcel zero nine six eight one eight two zero 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 six, which was approximately twenty-seven point three-two acres on Mack Road, was purchased in July two thousand three for six hundred and eighty-three dolla, eight, six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, excuse me. And the bottom line is, we can't find the restriction. I think the law is pretty clear. Y'all can repurpose. The, the, the confusion, I think, comes in three parts. Now, the first part is, my comments before dealing with bond and splash referendums are that just what's on a referendum question is not what binds the county. And in two thousand two, before I was here, there was a brochure that was generated that was sent out to people. And I've said repeatedly, and I think my comments have been quoted by others, that if you advert, if the county government advertises additional pieces, that becomes part of the question. You can't read it as if it's just a solicitation and only what the question says. But even in reading the question with the referendum, I think you'll find, for any kind of purpose you wanna put on here, because the law doesn't say from the rest of time, the money you spend on there can only be used for that same purpose. And there's plenty of finance catch laws about that and everything else. Typically, the kinda cases where you have problems is when you have covenant restrictions caused by something running with the land. You acquire, somebody gives you the land and says, I'll give you the land, but only for this purpose, and it runs with the land. Or there's some, you know, you can't do a bait and switch, for instance. You can't condemn a property, tell a court one thing, and then six weeks later, you turn around and use it for another purpose. In this case, there's enough time gone by that you can do anything you want to as far as repurposing, uh, is, is concerned. So, you know, we're comfortable, y'all, without, we've not participated, the legal partners not participated in where this goes.
Right, right.
I'm not involved in where it goes.
I wasn't asking that.
But, yeah, just, just can you do what, what's being proposed? The answer is yes.
Yes, okay. But, uh, the pluses about this park is just the fact it's centrally located in the shape of the county, and it does- and it does draw visitors all over the county because of the other facilities there. But my preference was going to be Site One, because it's further away from any surrounding houses and everything. But evidently, the cost is a big factor there. So I'll go with the recommendation from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I support the Animal Control Advisory Board's recommendation for Site Two, with the personal comment that I feel very respectful of the community opposition to this. And I want every means taken prior construction, during construction, and after construction, we follow through and be good neighbors. Very clearly, we committed to a strong buffer configuration. And, you know, I don't want to see little dogwoods, you know, big around my finger. I want to see, I want to see sizable trees, if they're cryptomeria or Leyland cypress or whatever, employed, so we have a strong respective and a nice appearing buffer front of that, but that's all I have to say.
Okay. We have a court of appointments, which we can talk about in executive session. Ken, is there any other issues?
Litigation, Mr. Chairman.
Litigation and?
Personnel.
Personnel. Do we have a motion?
I don't think so.
Second, let's take all the-
Real estate also, Mr. Chairman, real estate.
Take all three, all three.
Go move.
Go move.